Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the South Kingston Town Council meeting. Today is March 13th, 2017. As we stand for the pledge, I would like to invite the Girl Scouts that are here to come and lead us in the pledge. You can come right up here to the front. We'd like you to lead us in the pledge allegiance. If everyone would kindly stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God.
I am moving item 13B up to the front of the agenda, and this is a proclamation for Girl Scout Week.
Meg, we have to do a roll call first.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jill.
That's okay. Council President Healy.
Here.
Council Vice President Collins.
Here.
Councilman De Cruz.
Here.
Councilwoman Gladhill.
Here.
Councilman Veely. All members present.
Am I good to go?
To go.
Okay. Girl Scout Week, which is March 12th through March 18th, 2017, whereas Sunday, March 12th, 2017, marks the 105th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon Lowe in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas through Girl Scouting, girls grow in courage, confidence, and character, and learn to make the world a better place. And whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts, the preeminent organization for girls, has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism. And whereas Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing the interest and skill level of today's youth in math, science, and technology, careers, and to fulfill our country's economic needs. And whereas through participation in Project Undercover, a council-wide community service project, every girl will learn that she can make a change for betterment in her community. And whereas Girl Scouts Cookie Sales is the world's, wow, largest girl-led business, teaching financial literacy to girls of all ages. And whereas the Girl Scouts of Southeast New England, which serves 12,000 girls in Rhode Island, will be celebrating 105 years in an American tradition with more than 3.4 million current Girl Scout members. Now, therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingston, do hereby proclaim the week of March 12th through March 18th, 2017, as Girl Scout Week in the Town of South Kingston, and we urge each and every one of our citizens to support the Girl Scouts in their endeavors. Congratulations.
Motion to approve 13B.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would somebody like to come up and accept the proclamation?
Why don't they all come up?
Thank you.
Thank you for the s'mores.
I saw that online. I was like, oh, I hope I get to try those.
I tried them over the weekend.
You're a fan now, huh? I'd like to move on now to the approval, item number four A and B, the approval of the minutes from the previous meetings.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And brings us to item five, which is the consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
One.
Motion passes. Yep, we're going to move item 13A, which is the approval of the budgets. I'm just going to vote for that. And this is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2017 and '18 Town Council preliminary budget as presented in the Town Manager's Proposed Budgets, and it showed on Exhibit Two. Subject Two, there were a few amendments.
The budget is presented in Exhibit Two. There are 10 separate municipal funds that make up the entire municipal program. As shown on page 17, the total municipal program that was prepared was at $94,535,411. The council has gone through review of the budget and is recommending amendments to the general fund as presented on page 12 of the account. The amendments that were considered earlier this evening was to increase the line item for health care by the amount of $100,000. That will revise that budget amount from $350,000 to $450,000, $100,000 increase, Account Hospice, home hospice care, Account 589602, would increase by $1,000 from $1,500 to $2,500 contribution. Welcome House, Account 589609, would increase from $8,000 to $10,000, $200, $20,000 increase. Easter Seals, Account 589613, would increase from $1,000 to $2,000, $1,000 increase. Moving on to contributions to outside agencies, contributions to the fire companies of the town, both Union and Kingston Fire Districts, Account 580108, would increase from $3,600 to $5,400. Next is the Wakefield Village Association. Amount would increase from $3,500 to $5,000, $1,500 increase. Finally, Washington County Community Development Corp., which is not requesting funding this year, reduced by $1,000 to zero from the $1,000 that was in the manager's proposed budget. The overall increase in outside agencies would be $2,300. The overall increase on human service agencies would be $4,000 for a total of $6,300 for general amendments and $100,000 on the health care. Total increases would be $106,300. On the revenue side of the budget, there will be a change on the account for designated fund balance used to the general fund. Account 499060 will go from a total of $300,000 to 300 and, 300, let me clear that, from $550,000, $550,000 to $600,000, an increase of $50,000 over what was in the manager's proposed budget. The bottom line expenditure for the general fund would increase to $23,787,355 if my math is correct, and we'll verify that tomorrow with those amendments. There are no changes recommended on the other nine funds. I would recommend, if this is the will of the council, that the council pass two separate resolutions. First would be a motion to adopt the municipal budget with the amendments that I've currently read into the record for all funds other than the school fund. Secondly, you would then have a motion to adopt the school fund as presented in the agenda this evening. So, Meg, if you will, you could call for that motion at this time.
I would ask one of the council members to make a motion on item number one, as Steve discussed.
Is it all right to say so moved, or so moved? I will second it. I will second that motion, and exclusive of the funding for the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce. Do I have this wording right, Mike?
Southern Rhode Island Chamber, and you're going to recuse on that specific line item. And Brian, I understand you need to recuse on a line item.
For the Union Fire District.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number two, then, which comes to, brings us to the school committee budget.
The school fund for the, as presented on page 12 and 13, calls for a total budget On the revenue statement, there shows a transfer in property tax of $52,415,096, which represent a 2% increase over the levy appropriation for the current year to the school fund. That is the budget that's before you.
Motion to approve as presented. Can I ask a question regarding that?
After a second.
Do we have a second?
Meg, you can second if you want.
Second.
Now you can have discussion.
Go ahead, Brian.
I just wasn't sure, you know, we're looking at the proposed budget, but I know we had some concerns regarding that.
So I think we vote on what he, because Abel just made a motion to approve the 2%, and then if that goes through, then we move on, or if it doesn't go through, then somebody can make a motion for zero, or one, or whatever. Is that correct, Mike?
A motion to amend it could be made as well.
Right.
Well, we can, I mean, it's proper at this time to have discussion.
Absolutely.
Motion and a second, and I frankly can't support a 2% property tax transfer increase. As I said during our work session, I've been through three budget sessions so far. We're down about 303 students in enrollment, and if we approve this 2% increase in property tax transfer, you're looking at about $3 million more than our, my first budget, which was two years ago, two and a half years ago. And frankly, our cost per pupil is substantially above the state average. So I can't support a 2% increase in the tax transfer.
I also am not going to be supporting the 2% increase. I think that we've failed to look at a long-term plan for how to address the declining enrollment and some of the issues that we're having within the school department. If a budget was presented to me with a 2% property tax transfer that had some radical new ideas to address closing the achievement gap, addressing declining enrollment, you know, addressing the buildings that we have that maybe aren't occupied completely, then I would consider adopting the budget. But I don't think the one that exists now is something that is what's best for our school district, and I think that there are other cuts, more appropriate cuts, that could be made.
I believe that the school department deserves an increase, but I believe they don't deserve a 2% increase currently, based off of our work sessions. It's like I said, I would support an increase, but not at 2%.
I don't disagree with what everybody's saying. I certainly do agree with you, but I also have to look at the fact that the biggest increase in their budget is the benefit side. I mean, their health care, EPOE health care, has gone up 11%, and that's the biggest part of the budget, aside from giving them an allocation for some technology, which Liz, you pointed out earlier, and I disagree with you, a lot of the younger classrooms may not need computers. But you look at it, and today, that's the way of the world. And I know if you're managing like this, like you're managing your home, if you don't have the money, you can't spend it. But I also don't want to disregard the children of our future and the people that are guiding them to be our next successful generation, and that's just how I feel. And I agree. I mean, can we level fund them? We certainly could level fund the schools. We absolutely could with declining enrollment. I get that. But how do you negate somebody who's on social security not getting a 2% cost of living increase? I don't know. I think we need to support our schools. We do.
Yeah, I'm supporting the 2% figure for a number of reasons. I think, you know, we've met numerous times with the school committee. I think they understand that they need to come up with a long-term plan about addressing, you know, perhaps having too many facilities. I think they're going to rededicate themselves to this purpose, but we can't ignore the fact that the position they're in right now is looking ahead at an increase in step for salaries, negotiation of the contracts for all three unions, and declining state support. I think these factors combined sort of necessitate a 2% property tax transfer if we want to maintain the level of service we have for years and years for our students. You know, I know it doesn't seem like a cut, but it does mean that they're going to have less employees, less teachers. If we went to level funding, for instance, that would be probably 15 teachers that would have to be released, and I won't consider doing that.
Even at the 2% rate, they're going to have to look at some stipulations with employees, and they're going to micromanage that budget. And it's inevitable with the decline, if things continue, we will have to take more appropriate measures, and it's not always easy. But I don't want to jeopardize the education of our children at a budget that we have scrutinized, we really have scrutinized this. There's not much left in it, to be honest with you. I just look at the kids.
I don't agree that there's not much left in it, but I frankly don't manage the school department's budget. And it is that person on social security who's trying to stay in their home that I consider when I think about a property tax increase that is high.
When I think about the kids, I think about making our community more affordable, so when our kids can graduate high school, they can afford to stay here, or when they come back from college. And I think that speaks to a larger issue that we have with declining enrollment about the affordability of our community. And I just don't think every year we can keep giving more and more and more and see declining enrollment and make meaningful change in how affordable our community is. So that's...
I think declining, we talk about declining enrollment. It's not a new thing. It's been going on for many, many years, and unfortunately, I think we've come to the point where we can't just keep raising taxes to pay for it.
I also look at it as, yes, we do have declining enrollment. I agree. Yes, something will probably have to be done that nobody wants to do. But I also look at the fact that the state has overwhelmed, really decreased the state aid that we've been receiving here in South Kingston, and I don't know how else to make up for that. You know, I look at how we just approved preliminarily a budget. We were increasing so many outside agencies and human service agencies that also get a lot of grants and federal funding. But I think we have a responsibility to our children. We really do. They're our future leaders.
Steve, can you remind me of what the actual dollar amount is for 2%?
The tax transfer would go from $51,387,349 to $52,415,096. The increase would be $1,027,737. It would represent 86.5% of the entire budget.
And that does include the state aid?
That includes the state aid, but the state aid is seeing a reduction of $480,721 for the year.
So our actual increase is about 600 and some odd thousand.
That's correct. Around 640, 45,000. The overall budget increase expenditure-wise is up 1.1%.
Do we have a, I don't know what to do at this point.
We have a motion in a second.
At some point, you need to take a vote on that, and then depending on how that goes, there may be, most likely, another motion.
Okay. Since we do have a motion on the floor, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay.
So now you need another motion.
I'll make a motion to level fund the school budget, the property tax transfer.
And Joe, just so we're very clear, your motion is that it would be the same property tax transfer as was on the adopted 2017 budget.
Right.
That's showing on page 13 of Exhibit Two.
You have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh.
Discussion.
You should add, just in case. Ask if there's discussion.
All those in favor?
No, no, no. We want discussion. We want to have discussion.
Are we still discussing?
Oh, I said everything I needed to say in the earlier comments.
Discussion. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Is that three names?
Yes.
So now you need yet another motion.
Do I hear another motion on the table?
I make a motion that we increase the tax levy by 1.25%.
Do we have a second? Seeing no second?
Tax transfers.
Okay, by 1.25% from the 2017 adopted. We should just make sure we know what the number is. Steve's doing his magic.
1.25% on the current year appropriation of 51,387, would result in an increase of
Do we have a second? No second. What do we see?
Motion dies without a second, and now we need another motion.
Do we have another motion on the table?
Can you make a motion again?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion again for 1.25.
Oh, no, that failed.
Okay.
You're going to say one or some other number.
Three.
Yeah.
Six.
Motion to approve a budget with a 1.75% increase.
Second.
Okay, Steve will now figure that out. We can't close it until we know the number.
1.75% on the 51 results in $899,279.
Subtracting out the, well, taking out the $480,000. That we got to speak.
Steve, if you add that to the 2017 budget, what would the 2018 budget be? Down from 6573,360 to 6444892.
So a decrease that will probably necessitate another teacher and some extra funding cut from the budget.
So it's 1.75% as opposed to the 2. That's basically what your motion is.
Yeah, I certainly can't support this.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so there's another no vote, three to two, so is anyone going to try 1.5?
I'll make a motion that, for 1%.
1%?
No, no.
Yeah, you, yeah, 1%.
What do you mean, going backwards? I'm sorry. I'm going backwards, trying to get consensus.
You were at 1.25.
Correct, and that didn't work.
Steve, would 1% cover salary and step increases? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Salary and increases on their budget at this point would amount to an estimated $776,000, as far as the increase over the current year.
Oh, do you need a second, Brian?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Seconding the 1%?
Yeah.
Discussion.
I'd like to hear what the figures are for... That'll, that'll transfer just barely enough to cover the decline in state funding.
That should transfer approximately $513,000.
$873,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, that...
Yeah, you had it. Bottom line budget would be $60,059,486. It would be $133,000 over the current year appropriation of the fund.
Any further discussions?
Sorry, I can't, I can't support it.
Do we have a motion on the floor for?
1%. Yes.
We have a second.
Right, that would be the additional $513,873.
And this is a preliminary budget, so when we send this back to the school committee, they're going to come back to us and show us what they do with whatever we tell them, right?
You've got, your budget here will go to two public hearings.
Right.
One on the 12th and one on the... One on the twelfth and one on the thirteenth of April. Subsequent to that, and within the budget process, people can create petitions to have you vote additional money up or down. Your final budget adoption would be on April twenty-fourth, is it Dale?
Yes.
Yeah, twenty-fourth, Monday the twenty-fourth. On Monday the twenty-fourth, you would be able to make adjustments in that budget further. So if you wanted to add back money or subtract money, you'd have the opportunity to do so. And you would also be addressing any petitions that have gone through the charter provisions.
I share in Joe's hesitation, but I would be willing to agree to one percent and see what that looks like, um, and make adjustments on the twenty-fourth if we needed to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay.
So that's three names, correct? Need another motion?
Motion, uh, to approve a resolution to increase the funding by one point five percent.
Second?
Second.
What's the number? The only one we haven't hit.
Any further discussion?
See all the fun you miss?
I, I, I just, again, I, I understand that we need to make some tough choices, but one point five percent is not a lot when you have some very strong professionals that are educating our children. And do I agree there's gonna be some hard choices down the end, probably closing a building or something of that nature? I do, I absolutely do. But I really believe that the education of the children is extremely important, and I have to support our teachers.
Uh, Meg, I, I think everyone at the table, I think, feels strongly like you do, I think we're just, um, in terms of fiscal responsibility, um, differing in opinion.
And that's, that's okay. I just know if, if the difference of opinion is gonna be at the detriment of some of our teachers who will have to be reduced, laid off. And I understand that's the real world, but these people are good people and work very hard for our children. I, I don't think a one point five percent increase is a huge tax burden. It is to some people who don't have children in the schools, myself included, I don't have children in the schools. But when I look at what we're doing in increasing the amount of money that we're spending, which is a smaller amounts, of course, to human services in our outside agencies, and we can't give back to our own children, I, I have difficulty with that.
Meg, if I can, um, I don't think anybody at this table doesn't support the education system, I don't think anybody here does not support the teachers. I don't think it's very fair to compare a seven thousand dollar increase in spending for outside agencies and nonprofits to a seven hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in, uh, spending on a school system that has dramatically declining enrollment. Everybody here supports our teachers and our system, I don't think anybody here is saying that they don't. I think every year if we, in mid-March, this is the third time, every year in mid-March if we say we have this catastrophe that's gonna hit us July first, this is, we're, we're just going about it the wrong way.
Then it means to me that we are not doing our jobs appropriately to find more constructive ways to make the process work. Because cutting salary, it's, it is cutting salaries, cutting positions, and, yeah, tough times deserve tough measures. But the bottom line is, we need to be more constructive with the school committee, although it's, I mean, we just allocate the dollars, they spend it as they see fit. But if we're not doing the right thing, and I, I wholeheartedly agree about how you feel, Joe, like, and I respect that, I really do. But this is gonna continue to happen, and, and I sat here for two work sessions, I don't even know if he's here, but Mr., Mr. O'Neill spoke and, and, you know, he was council member for fourteen years, and he said, "This has been discussed for so many years, but yet we continue to let it happen." And is the decision right to close a school? Maybe, maybe not. But I'd rather close a school and reallocate personnel, um, and seize some of the buildings that now sit at sixty, maybe seventy percent of capacity, be filled up, and put teachers back to full classrooms, rather than cut pay and have to make a decision of who's gonna go and who's not. It's, it's not, it's, I don't know, that's, that's just my two cents, but I, I, I hear you, Joe, I do, I really do.
So you know the number at the one point five percent, it would be an increase of seven hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars.
Can we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
I just think it's good to be conscious of, of what that means, so, you know, at the two percent level, school system was anticipating losing ten positions. At this level, it'll probably be another three, so it's thirteen people gone from our schools, uh, who are teaching our kids. And, um, I do not think that this is where we need to balance the budget, I think public education is under assault around the country. It's basically what built the middle class in our country, and if we, here in South Kingston, a very wealthy community can't support public education, then I think we've given up, uh, a lot of optimism and hope in, you know, striving for a better future for our kids. And, yes, we need to potentially close a school and enact other cost-cutting measures, look for renewed funding, but I think decreasing, uh, the, the increase that we give the schools is asking for potential, uh, breakdown in contract negotiations. Uh, I don't think we want that type of pain in our community, and I think, uh, you know, one point five percent is a reasonable compromise.
I just wanna clarify that I too believe in public education and wanna support our children, and I think our community is very lucky that we've had the public education system that can support, um, our students and our future, and it's an investment, and I appreciate that, but when I, um, settled down with my husband, we rented a house in North Kingston, 'cause it was less expensive to live there than it was in South Kingston. And South Kingston's just not an affordable community, and we have to draw the line somewhere, and when something takes up eighty percent of your budget or more, that is where you have to make compromises, and I, of course, hate doing that on the backs of teachers and, and supplies in our school departments, but I'm not saying we, we have no control over where those cuts are made, that's all up to the superintendent, I can't say, I've got my own opinions about where I, I wanna make those cuts and where I think those cuts are appropriate, and I do think there are other areas that can be cut, but the bottom line is that's not our choice, that's the superintendent's choice, and I think she's working with a lot less students over the years, and we've seen increase after increase after increase. Somewhere, something has to change, and this is the first time that we've ever even talked about a long-term plan. Last year, we had a long discussion about a facility study, it never came to fruition, I believe it's gonna come into fruition this year, but the fact that we had to ask and ask and ask for that to happen, I, I just, I think the line has to be drawn somewhere, and that's why I'm, I'm so staunch on my position.
The other thing I wanted to add is, I am very cognizant of the fact that we have three contract negotiations that have to go on this year. I'm not saying people will actually hold it over the heads, but if those contract negotiations don't go well, how much more is it gonna cost the town?
I think that's a, a good point. I, I don't know, I think if we're talking about the affordability of town, it's not our tax burden that's making us an unaffordable place to live, it's land prices and the average cost of a home. If we wanna do something about that, we need to address affordable housing policy, we can't address it by cutting the school budget.
That isn't what the widow on Tucker Town Road feels, she feels the tax burden is too much. But you can call the vote.
People make a choice to live here, and they do so for many reasons, the quality of life here is, I think it's outstanding, and the quality of education is outstanding. People move here because of our school systems, because of our prestigious all the fields and the tennis facilities and the walking trails, I mean, y- you make a choice and it comes at a, at a price, but I don't wanna do it at the detriment of the children, I really don't. And I, I know you all have to agree with that, I know you do. But you also have very good ed- educators here in this town, and I would hate to have to see several, um, of our faculty have to lose their positions because of this vote. But it is what it is, and we have to make a decision, and the school, we can't dictate how they spend their money, that's, that's up to the school committee. But I don't know. Do we have a motion and a second on the table, unless there's any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
At this point, do we just wait till we meet with them again?
No, no, you need a preliminary budget approval this evening, you've gotta keep at it until there's three votes.
So we already went with the one point two five and no, is anyone willing to change their mind?
I will go to one percent, and that's, that's all.
You already did go to one percent.
I know, but I'm saying that's, that's where my bottom line was.
Do I have another motion?
Gonna be the same amendment, or you have to have?
Oh, i- if someone is willing to change their vote on one of those other percentages, whether it be one point two five or one, someone can announce that and there can be another motion.
Do I have another motion on the table?
I already compromised going up to one, sorry.
Do we hear that, is that a motion?
No, I, I already voted for one percent, so, I mean, can I make, I'll make it again, make a motion that, um, we increase the tax, it'll be by one percent.
Wait a second.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Will be hit at midnight. Really, really.
Brian can make his motion. Any of you can.
Anybody?
I think we, what we have to be cognitive of is that we can make adjustments in the future. We need to adopt something now so that we can move forward.
To approve an increase of one point five percent.
Second? Any further discussion? All of you in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
If someone's willing to change to one point two five, I could agree to that. I'll make a motion, uh, to, uh, approve one point two five as an increase.
Do we have a second? I can second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other advice, counsel?
Mike, I have to, um, leave, and I'm just curious what happens when the vote's two-two.
There's no vote.
Same result.
The same.
It's the same as a no vote. Right, you have to leave and...
Anybody wants to make a motion in the next minute?
Can I make a, a motion again for one?
Just, just an opinion. I've reviewed the budget. I believe if you're looking to send a message, any reductions that you make from the two percent is the message that things need to change in there being serious review of what's changing in the budget. I do think in a year where you do have the free labor contracts, I think that if in fact they approve contracts and go into any type of expenditures over what's budgeted, what's gonna happen is they're gonna move money out of undesignated funds and increase that above the five hundred thousand dollar mark to be able to stay in balance. So I think that, uh, that while you may not wish to stay at the two percent level, I think any amount below that would be appropriate to be able to send the message that I think that collectively, who as a counsel wished to send to the school committee. I think Liz is right that once you make, if you put one and a half or you put one point two five in, you've still got the review with the school committee coming up on those two public hearings, and you've got the final budget adoption. And they have the ability to amend that budget in terms of other revenue sources, one of that other revenue source would be in terms of undesignated fund balance available to finance the seventeen, eighteen year. So you're not making a final decision tonight, but you need to come up with a decision tonight. If you're looking at, uh, at, there's not a lot of difference between the one and a quarter and the one and a half. If there's a vote at someplace in there, you need to consider it and assume that you're gonna potentially make additional changes as you go forward. Nothing that says you can't cut additional dollars at a later time if you're not satisfied with the reaction that you get from the school committee. We do, we do need to have a decision this evening, because we need to be able to report to the state what the budget requirements are and get certification of the tax, uh, requirements before we go to those public hearings. So, uh, I'm asking you to please try to come up with a dollar amount, if it's less than two percent, send the message, and then have the, uh, the discussions with the school committee, but you need to make some type of mo- uh, motion this evening as far as bringing finality to this. I think it, you know, I would, I would suggest any place in the, I think that if you go with less than one percent, you're gonna have real difficulty being able to deal with the labor contracts that you have to deal with, unless there's substantial reductions in the personnel, or unless they're gonna make commitments as far as pro- uh, programs, such as the laptops for the third and the fourth grade, as a means of trying to get that budget amount down. They're giving you, uh, sheets as to where different revisions would, uh, they would, uh, consider. So, uh, I think really what it comes down to is that if you put it at one point five or you put it at one point two five now, at least then they have to tell you of that reduction, what specific items are they gonna take out?
I'll make a motion.
Try to come up with a consensus.
I'll make a motion again for one point two five.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No. Aye.
So sorry, I have to leave. I also was, you know, listening to the presentation, and I know we've had several decreases in enrollment.
Before Liz leaves, what's the maximum that you're willing to provide in terms of support? You would support as much as one point two five. And we don't have support within the other four to be able to stay at the one point two five.
You have one.
Brian?
You, you would. And make sure I understand, so Abel, you're looking at it saying that's too low, so you're rejecting it, and Meg's doing the same.
Well, we've already reduced staff since our meeting with the school committee, we have ninety-five, ninety-five staff members, and this, this, this is...
What do you, I'm sorry, ninety-five staff members, where?
I forgot what, but the, the
Safe travels.
Years, I forgot the years, um, that Christian spoke to us about.
Oh, okay. Over, over a number of years, not, okay.
And, and we're also not gonna cut, there's not much else they can cut except to take the computers out of the schools. We're not spending money on anything else, we stopped the roofs, we stopped the construction, we stopped...
I think roofs are part of the capital, right?
Yeah, but we've taken everything that they've asked for in their budget, whether it's capital or not, and pretty much reduced, not much left. And the only thing left is people are gonna have to go.
But I, I think that, um, preliminary at one point two five, we can then look at what adjustments need to be made. to be made. I'm not saying that I'm not willing to increase at that point if need be, but I think 1.25 is reasonable. If you look at the reduction in state aid and adding the $200,000 approximately in added health cost, it comes out to around $681,000.
And now I have another question. For the people that do receive, I don't even know if this is part of the school committee budget because I, you don't get involved with that, but what about the free and reduced lunch and...
Isn't that, is that a federal program?
Is that fed, is that federally funded? Or would that be something that...
I don't think they've got that.
That has nothing to do with the budget, the free, but I suggest that you consider the 1.25 with the statement that you'll evaluate further either up or down based on the reaction that you get from the school committee.
I can make that motion.
Now, at that point, I mean, we're, we're going to be trying to determine in terms of the state what the certification will be as far as that increase is concerned, but we've got to break the stalemate here. There's got to be, so I mean, if, if it's a case that it's too low for Abel and it's too low for Meg, are you willing then to take it to say 1.5 with the three of you with further review?
If we decide to give a lower amount, will that lessen what our allocation is for state aid?
No. So if you went at 1.5%, could that bring the other two people into that so that we would at least have a vote that we could move forward to tonight to get it to the public hearings and to the final adoption on the 24th?
I would rather go with the 1.25 with the understanding that during the process, we may have to adjust it.
Yeah, I think you've got two folks that are saying they would like you to move to their position rather than for the two of them to move to your position. So let's, let's...
Do we have a motion on the floor right now?
No, there is no motion on the floor.
Okay.
Motion to approve at 1.5% increase with consideration in future meetings to reduce that depending on what they propose cutting.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No. Quick question, does Liz left her vote at 1.25, does no longer count?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And I suggest 1.33, 1 and 1/3.
I would be okay with that.
You'd be okay with that. Well, make the motion.
Motion to approve at 1.4%.
Do I have a second? I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No. I'll make a motion for 1.35.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hesitatingly, I say aye.
No.
Correct.
1.35.
1.35 will mean an increase of $693,729.
But I want it on the record that this is definitely not the closed...
I want to get the motion to adopt the budget. You've got the 1.35, it means that the gross budget would amount to $60,239,342, reflecting a 1.35% increase in the tax corporation as the only change in the budget and be the school committee's responsibility to balance that budget to the revenues ought to...
Unless we decide that, that figure could change when we meet again, that is correct.
Yes, you can amend that budget right through to the final April 21 adoption of the budget, 24.
Okay.
Is that a vote of the council?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that...
They understood.
We want to vote again.
1.35.
Okay. Moving on, item number 6A, licenses. Resolution granting holiday sales license to Sprint Spectrum on Main Street in Wakefield by Laura Veet. Is Laura here to speak? I can hold that till the end to see if she does show up, but we can come back to that.
She wasn't here last time, right?
Personally went to the store to tell them to be ready.
Might have gave up.
All right, well, we'll move on to item 6B, a resolution granting miscellaneous peddler's permit to swirls and scoops on Kingstown Road by Gerald Di Maria. Is Gerald here? Gerald, would you like to speak? State your name when you come to the podium.
Gerald Di Maria on behalf of swirls and scoops.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us, tell us a little bit about the business.
Sure. We bought the old Lickety Splits business on Kingstown Road back in the end of August 2015. We've since been doing quite a few renovations over there and expansions and this is just another way to expand. We have several events lined up to be able to do in different parts of the state, in Narragansett, in Warwick. We've been asked to do some fundraisers in South Kingstown and so we'd like to apply for the permit to do those and perhaps some other events where we're looking at possibly participating at the Seaside Classic and things like that. So that's the purpose for the license.
Will you have like a truck or something?
It's a cart that's been approved by the Department of Health, so it's a push cart at the current time.
Motion to approve item 6B.
I'll second that motion.
I just have a question, you, you understand the conditions of the peddler's license?
The restrictions, yeah. Yes, we met with Lieutenant Healy about that, yes.
Great.
Further discussion?
No.
Do we have a motion and a second on the table? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
6C, a resolution granting holiday sales to Benny and Jack on Kingstown Road in Wakefield. Is David Bilo here? Bilo, I'm sorry.
You're right, Bilo.
Tell us a little bit about what you do.
Absolutely. Benny and Jack is a pet retail store and a resource store like we are kind of marketing ourselves towards. We opened up July of 2015 on Robinson Street, so I've been before you for the holiday license as well, in addition to peddlers. And we recently moved to 577 Kingstown Road and with that, that requires a new license.
Motion to approve item 6C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck. Moving on to D, a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct KIAI, 5K road race on May 13th to Karate Instruction Assistance Initiative.
I think it's KIAI.
KIAI, okay, thank you. Is anybody here to represent them?
Hi, I'm Jessica DeBraska and KIAI, as you so correctly pronounced, is the acronym for Karate Instructor Assistance Initiative. And it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I think some of you are very familiar with it. It's a scholarship program that we fundraise throughout the year for students, both adult and children in our community who would like to benefit from martial arts instruction who can't otherwise afford it. So we fundraise all year so that they can afford it. And that's what we do, we want to give back to our community always. I've been involved with this for the better part of 20 years, I'm a new board member, new event coordinator for the 5K today, but I've involved with martial arts teaching, managing, and educating.
So how can people sign up for the, for the race?
You can go to RaceWire.com and the link is up there. And there's also additional options for fundraising. It's a great time, it's a run and a walk, so you don't have to be afraid of the run part.
Motion to approve agenda item 6D.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the metric century 100 kilometer cycling ride on May 13th at 8:00 AM to the Welcome House of South County on North Road. Is anybody here to speak on the agenda?
Good evening, I'm Helen Drew with the Board of Directors of Welcome House and we put this before you as a fundraiser for Welcome House and thank you already for your support earlier. And we have a highly organized committee working with the bike shops and got support for this and would appreciate having the permit. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
How can somebody sign up and help contribute to this effort?
We have a website, Welcome House of South County website, and from there you can connect to the signup which is on BikeReg. And there's also, as the previous speaker mentioned, an opportunity to make a contribution there as well.
Thank you. Motion to approve item 6E.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution granting a Victorating license to Flat Waves doing business as Flat Waves Food Shack in Forton Road in Kingston. And is William Burgess or somebody here interested?
I'm William Burgess and Flat Waves is a little beach style, kind of beach food type restaurant. We have fish tacos and pulled pork and rice and things like that and we're looking to open over at 99 Forton Road by URI.
Is that in the Emporium or is that...
It is, yep.
Three hours?
11 to 11 Monday through Thursday and 11 to 2 on Friday and Saturday, closed on Sundays. And I see in here too, we have, we got these approvals and inspections done in the last couple of days, so we have been approved by the Department of Health and that paperwork got submitted this morning.
Okay.
Motion to approve 6F. Mike, do we need the language in there about the, or just approving the agenda?
It's there.
It's there, okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thanks a lot.
Next, we come to item number 7A, which is a public hearing. And this is a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to Article 5 supplementary regulation, Section 504, special use permits that would add Section 50414, household occupancy by more than three unrelated individuals and as amended in Article 12.
Council President Healy, I have some communications to reference. We have communications in support of this application from Russell Bertrand, David Cook, Maria Croto, Jacqueline Edwards, Sasha Cahilly Manners in Ilika Manners, Marie Reynolds, and Ina Shaborazi. We have another communication in support of the petition, but from Christopher Little, but he would suggest a longer duration for the special use permit. And we have one communication opposed to this application from Doug Wardwell.
Do we have anybody who would like to speak?
Do we have the planning? First, yeah.
Good evening. I'm just going to run through what the proposed amendment entails so that everyone's on the same page. So this proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance would allow household occupancy by more than three unrelated persons via what we're calling a time limited special use permit. As you recall, this matter originated with a zoning amendment application by Paul Sherman in June of 2016. The planning board reviewed that application and recommended an ad hoc committee to the council. The council then denied the application and referred it back to the planning board. The planning board considered the topic at their September, October, November, and December work session meetings. In January 2017, they directed staff to make some final revisions and approved it in February, approved recommending the revisions in February 2017. So the proposed amendments modify the definition of household, which is found in Article 12 of the zoning ordinance, to permit household occupancy by more than three unrelated persons pursuant to granting a special use permit. The proposed amendments also add a new section within the, within the portion of the zoning ordinance that deals with special use permits, Section 504.14, titled Household Occupancy by More Than Three Unrelated Individuals. And that section sets the standards and criteria by which the special use permits would be granted. So I'll just run through what the criteria are. So first, all of the special use permits granted under this, under this section would be conditioned to expire after two years. The special use, to continue the use under the special use permit, an applicant would have to apply for renewal prior to that expiration date. Development plan review by the planning board would be required for all new applications and also for renewal applications with substantial changes or for applications that have lapsed. Renewal applications that are the same thing would not have to go through development plan review. Development plan review applications would include exterior building elevations and interior floor plans, which would allow the planning board to determine whether the exterior of the structure is residential in character. It would also allow the planning board to determine if the gross leasable floor area ratios have been met. One parking space would be required for each proposed or potential occupant. No parking would be able to be allowed on the lawn or in landscaped areas and rental, lease, or grant of the parking spaces would not be allowed. There would be a minimum requirement of 330 square feet of gross leasable floor area per proposed occupant. Bedrooms containing one occupant could be a minimum of 70 square feet and bedrooms containing two occupants would be a minimum of 100 square feet. Bedroom occupancy by more than two persons would not be allowed. So property owners would need to register the name of their manager, who would have to be in-state located in Rhode Island, with the zoning enforcement officer. It would have to be, the information would be updated annually or as needed if there were an interim change. The property would need to be in conformance with the zoning ordinance and the Rhode Island State Building Code and prior to initial occupancy would be inspected for both. And the amendments actually, it was important to the board that the amendments contain considerations for the zoning board to make a determination on a renewal application. So to give them some guidance that would say when a renewal would be appropriate and when it wouldn't, and so, excuse me. They looked at three criteria on that, so the first one would be that applicants would have to show that they have complied with all of the standards contained in the special use permit criteria or that prompt action was taken to correct any deficiencies. They would also have to show that there was no record of police activity in the prior two years or that if there is, there was prompt action again to remedy any issues that may have led to that police action. And then the third one is that no complaints were registered with the zoning board of review or that prompt action was taken to remedy those complaints. And then as with all special use permits, the zoning board of review would be able to impose any special conditions that they saw fit to make sure that the standards for special use permits were met. That's a general summary, I'm happy to take questions.
So the planning board has recommended this for approval?
They have, yes.
They can make that on the record.
I have another communication, I'm sorry I missed this one, from the South Kingstown Planning Board to the Town Council dated February 15, 2017, recommending the amendment as proposed and incorporating findings of fact consistency with the comprehensive plan and findings of fact consistency with the purposes of zoning.
We did discuss in the work session prior to the meeting tonight, the potential for changing the two-year term to a three-year term. Is that something you think the planning board and planning department would support?
I, I believe that the planning board would support a three-year term. Their... There, you know, and there was correspondence seeking to change it to a five-year term. The planning board, because of the nature of a special use permit, it cannot be revoked. You know, once it's granted, it's granted for the period of time that it is, for which it is granted. And the planning board talked quite a bit about that, and were concerned that a time limit that would be too long would allow an unacceptable condition to happen for a long time. But I believe, you know, three, three years is a reasonable extension.
And if I understood correctly during the work session, at renewal, it's not automatic, they don't have to go through development plan review?
Correct. So the development plan review is really for the layout of the site and the architecture. And so, once that's established, as long as they're not increasing the use substantially, and as long as it has not lapsed, so if they continue to maintain their two-year renewals, they would not have to go through the planning board and the development plan review process.
I'm Helen Drew from Welcome House, and we have discussed this, and I'm on the board at Welcome House, and we're very supportive of this. It's an important part of helping the homeless with our transitional housing, to be able to have more than three unrelated people together. If you have an opportunity in a four-bedroom house, it would make sense to have an opportunity to do that. It's more both economical, and it's also a good environment. It creates a nice unit. So we applaud you for making these exceptions. Thank you.
I'm Joanne Costanza, and I have a question about the underlying zoning regulation that this is built on. Am I to understand that there's a regulation that says that no more than three unrelated individuals can live together in a household in South Kingstown?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. It doesn't apply just to rentals. It applies to any, anyone in South Kingstown who wants to live with three other unrelated individuals is not allowed to do so by the town.
The key is unrelated, so it doesn't apply to family members, obviously. And that's based on a state law, and I think you'll find most of the communities in the state have that language in their zoning law.
I'm really surprised to learn this, because who are the people who would be unrelated individuals, who would want to live together, or need to live together? It would be maybe people who couldn't afford to live in a situation where they weren't sharing the rent. And that could include students, but it could include other young professionals, or even older people. It could include the LGBTQ community. And I'm, I'm very surprised that questions of bias and fair housing haven't come up in terms of a regulation like this.
Actually, there's a United States Supreme Court decision on this. It was challenged, I forget which state it was challenged on, and the Supreme Court ruled, in looking at a number of variables, that it was okay to do that. So, so there's actually been a Supreme Court, a US Supreme Court decision on no more than three unrelated. However, you realize the purpose of this ordinance would be to expand that beyond three?
Yes, I do, and I personally would support it in the face of having already an ordinance like this. But I would request that you look really closely at the ordinance, and see if you are seeing the same bias, or the same fair housing issues that I am. Because if you were to substitute, here, when we're talking about unrelated individuals, if you were to substitute any other group there, and have some sort of standard like this, like, you would have to provide enforcement standards for the base, for the abatement of nuisance conditions that may arise from such occupancy. More than three adult individuals don't necessarily, they aren't more likely to be a nuisance than related individuals. And of course, I do see that there's an exception, that if the unrelated individuals are servants, then it's perfectly okay, and you don't have to think about parking, delineating the sites, only being allowed to do that for two years, and then having to come back to the town to get permission. So I'm, I would hope that you would think about this, and what, what it means for a town to, it seems archaic to me, to be deciding how many unrelated individuals could live together, whether they're renting or not renting. Thank you. And I'm, I should say, I'm speaking as someone who's lived in a household with more than three unrelated adults, and we were not nuisances, and also someone who's a landlord, and who has rented to more than three unrelated adults. And they were not nuisances either. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. I think those are all very valid points. I don't want to give anybody the impression that this hasn't been thought through, though. As Chelsea said, there have been planning board meetings for months on end at this point. I think this is a compromise where we're loosening some of those property rights restrictions, if you will. And, you know, if this, if this works for the community, then we can consider loosening it further. Any other public comments?
My name is Zach Schartner, and I'm a landlord up by URI. I feel like this is an infringement of my property rights. I've been a landlord for twenty-seven years. I know I only look like I'm thirty-five, but I've actually been a landlord that long. I've been renting to students since two thousand and three. I own two different properties right on Forton Road by the university. I have a total of sixteen units. At any particular time, I can be renting to, depending on the year, thirty-five, forty to fifty kids, depending on what the makeup is of the groups. Since I've been doing this, I don't ever recall having any major issues with anybody, or my neighbors. In fact, my neighbors have told me multiple times that I've helped clean up the neighborhood by being a good landlord. Through the years, I just was writing some numbers down a little bit, trying to take a look at this. I think I'm going on almost twelve hundred students that have rented for me. I've also been a year-round landlord in Narragansett and in Wakefield for many years. My feeling, having three college students of my own, a freshman, a sophomore, and a junior, is that whether there's one person living in an apartment, or a condo, or a house, or there's eleven living in an apartment, or a condo, or a house, it's got nothing to do with how many students or people are living in a particular place, whether that could be deemed a nuisance, or okay for people. My feeling, looking at the ordinance itself, is that, I agree with this lady here, is that, why are we even looking at an ordinance at all? I feel like there should be no ordinance, that we already have a police department to enforce our laws about nuisances. So why can't we just, if there is, if there is one or two bad apples, which is what I'm hearing through the town, in this particular instance, what brought this all to a head, is that why can't we just deal with those one or two people through the current law enforcement system that we have, rather than trying to set up a set of rules for, potentially, and I'm guessing here, I don't know, there must be hundreds of properties within, or, sorry, South Kingston, that would, that would need to be set up as a special use now. If you look at the special use going forward, if that's what it's gonna be, and this is your prerogative, obviously, is that it seems like it's a burden on the town, to me, as a businessperson, to set up all these rules, and then have to come back every two years? Now, I've been a good landlord, and some people maybe aren't, okay? But for me to have to come back every two years, or three, or five, that's a burden on me now, when I'm doing a good job. And if I'm doing that, I, I'm not familiar with the actual process that it's gonna take. Let's assume that I have been good, all right? Is, when I come back to the board, do I need to notify all my neighbors every two years that I have to come back, even if I have been in good standing? Again, that's burdensome on me, and probably ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the landlords that are out there. So again, I, I implore you to take, to look at the, you know, I would strike the whole thing, could get rid of it, and say that we already have laws in place to be able to handle all this stuff. That's it. Thank you. Schartner. Schartner, yes.
Chelsea, to his point, at renewal, would he have that burden of notifying?
All special use permits have the same notification requirements, and they would require notice.
Even at renewal?
Yes, because it's a special use permit.
Okay. To answer some of your questions, Zach, the reason that we're addressing this is because somebody who was a good landlord brought it to our attention, and to some of the neighbors that have been impacted by some of the nuisances, it's, it's not the first ordinance that's ever been imposed, that is imposed because of a bad landlord, to protect the property rights of others. So I understand what you're saying, you know, I'm a small government guy, but I've lived next door to a bad landlord. So, again, it's, it's something that some people have to go through some, some heartache, if you want to call it that, because of some bad landlords. And I'm, the, the, the police couldn't solve the problem next to one, to my neighbor. I mean, they did their best, but when there's two hundred and fifty kids, it's hard.
Anybody else like to speak?
Lou? My name is Tom Green. I spoke here last summer, relative to a bad landlord, next door to me, past eight years, and experiences I've gone through, or had gone through, with URI students urinating outside my kitchen window, vomiting outside my kitchen window, noise at all hours. The police could not help. I called the police six, just last year, last school year, I called the police six times. They came, they could do nothing. The recommendation to me was that I sign a, I sign a complaint, go to court, and my response is, I do that, if things are gonna get worse. So I spoke here, you folks have followed through, as far as I'm concerned. I sat in at the planning board meetings, the work sessions, and this satisfies me. From my point of view, this covers everything. It's me the operative, or the means to address a problem. I don't like the fact that it's irrevocable, the special use permit is irrevocable, but the renewal process could cover that. I would prefer a two-year renewal to a three. Three, three years is a long time, to live next door to a nuisance. But I'm willing to concede to. But I definitely think this, this will help me out, and some of the other neighbors, quite a few people spoke here last summer, neighbors to that house I live at. And as far as I'm concerned, this is another satisfaction. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further comments from the audience? Sorry.
One more. My name is Paul Sherman. I think I'm the one who started this whole thing. I'm sorry. But I just wanted to point out, I had, I had quite a lot to say tonight, but I'm gonna shorten it. The first things I wanted to say was, just sitting down, and two, two different sessions, one was about six months ago, and one was last week, looking at the URI commuter housing. I came up with a list, and quite a stack of places, of thirty-five different places that are renting blatantly, advertising five bedrooms, four bedrooms, housing for eight, housing for twelve. So just, I just, you know, I mean, you just want to be clear, and I think you already are well aware of this, that there's a real need for some sort of ordinance, or some sort of control in, in South Kingstown. And so the, obviously, the existing ordinance of no more than three unrelated people in a house is consistently and blatantly being ignored. There's a great need for this type of housing in South Kingstown, and unless there's a place where homeowners and landlords can apply for relief for their individual situations, it's obviously that the existing ordinance will just, can still continue to just be ignored. This new special permit may not be perfect. There is no perfect solution to this, but it is a well-thought-out proposal to address the situation. It's the result of many, many months of discussions between the planning board, the staff, and comments from many interested parties, who have come to the open meetings and raised their concerns. We all live in neighborhoods that we love, and we want to protect from overcrowding and parties. This ordinance does address the situation. It establishes criteria for homeowners and landlords to meet, that addresses overcrowding, provides for adequate parking, deals with safety issues, requires listed names of responsible parties, and gives the town a way to enforce the ordinance if issues do arise. It will also provide the town with a record of where these houses exist, which I don't think anybody has any idea until they sit down and start making lists, as homeowners and landlords must apply for the special use permit on an individual basis. So I do want to thank the planning board and their staff for their willingness to persist in designing a document that we have here in front of the town council for their approval. As I said, it may not be perfect, but as Planning Director Vin Murray, as past Planning Director Vin Murray, told me, that it's a very good start, and something that can be amended over the years, to come to address issues that might come up, or may not be in the document as it now stands. So I really ask for a vote this evening to approve this special use permit, as it is getting very late in the year to be holding off tenants requesting housing for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Paul? Before you leave, do you have an opinion, do you think, two years, can you live with the two-year term?
I think that's the biggest problem with the document. I think two years is gonna be really, as Mr. Schartner mentioned, a real burden for people who have at least more than one place. I think, I think three is okay, I think five would be the best, but I think two years is gonna also be a big burden for the town, because you can see how many people are gonna be required to come in. I believe there are hundreds, I've not counted, but I, every time I look, there's thirty, there's twenty, there's, and they're different. So I think it's gonna be a real burden for the town to keep up with this. If you just do two years, it's just gonna be continuous. You'll be doing it every single meeting. So three to five years is, is much more reasonable. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Evening. Randy Demick, West Kingston resident. I followed the process since, I guess it was last summer, and I have to say that I am very pleased with the way this has played out. It's been thoughtful and, and intellectual, it's not been a wide brush. There are definitely different sides to the issue, and we do have to consider the reality of housing difficulties in this town, whether it's URI students, or changing economic terms, et cetera. So I'm, just as a person, pleased with the town council, the planning commission, and so on, and I heard the- maybe from, uh, Mr. Alfred, about, what about a special use permit instead of a magic number of four, or five, or whatever? My point I would like to make is that, as I did last time, is that I have not heard, unless I missed it, which could happen, uh, how this will be enforced, because it did come about in the previous meeting, or last year sometime, that, with the rule of three, that it was all on Mr. O'Hara, unless I'm mistaken. So I can't imagine all of this, especially the numbers Mr. Sherman just mentioned, all going to Mr. O'Hara. It's, so I'd like to be reassured, whether it was a speed limit sign or this ordinance, that there is a plan for enforcement, and if anybody could speak to that. And in any case, consider it going forward as you pass this ordinance. That would, that would, seems like it would be a good idea. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Jim O'Neill-Matunik, um, very much in support of the planning board and this plan. I would recommend three years, uh, simply because the rentals that I have in my neighborhood and a couple rentals I have up in the east side of Providence, uh, three years is a number that, uh, freshmen are usually housed, dorm that first year. The following three years, and those students that take an extra year, I've, I've had a lot more, matter of fact, by a high margin, of, uh, three-year rentals. So, I just work with students, but, um, uh, three years would be, I, I think, very proper. But again, I don't know the, uh, geography here, the numbers, how many are for senior housing, other rentals, but in my world of rentals, uh, for students, uh, three years would be a number I'd like to work with. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any further discussion?
Uh, I think that, uh, three years would be a bit of a compromise to the timeframe.
I agree. And I, I want to say thank you to the planning board. I know, uh, this was a, a long and trying process, and for everyone involved, not just the planning board, people who came at the meetings, uh, for the past six, seven months. Um, I'm prepared to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second. Aye.
Aye. I would, uh, make a motion to approve item seven B, uh, uh, seven A, sorry, uh, amending it to change the two-year term to a three-year term.
And specifically, what you'll be amending this evening is section 504, point fourteen, subsection B, ten, A and B. It all makes sense, so it's 50414, B-ten, A and B, where two years shows up, it'll be three years. And able, with that, um, change, if you also incorporate into your motion, um, the council's adoption, um, in agreement with the correspondence and recommendations from the planning board dated February fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, um, with specific regard to findings of consistency with the comprehensive community plan and the purposes of zoning. I think Chelsea's telling me there's one other place. I'm sorry. And, um, I skipped over, it's B-one, so it's B-one and B-ten where those changes, thank you, Chelsea, would be made.
So moved.
Second?
Second. And, uh, for discussion, I'd just like to say that to, uh, the, the three-year term may not be ideal for some of the landlords, um, but we do have to consider the neighbors that have been impacted, uh, even though I think we have much, many less instances than some other communities. It is a burden, and three years is not ideal, but I think we have to consider the, the abutters, the neighbors who are impacted by, again, a few.
Do we have a motion, and, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to seven B, and I see we do have members of the Elks here, and this is, again, a public informational presentation on the second year progress report on the Elks Lodge eighteen ninety-nine free home maintenance and repair assistance program, called Home Wrap. Thank you. You can even do this like three nights a week, like, this budget session.
They weren't, they were joking about it?
Get to ask a question, clarify. Where's the pizza?
We can share.
Ready?
Ready.
We're ready.
Uh, South Kingstown Elks Lodge would, uh, like to thank the council for letting us come in and, and provide you with an update, uh, of our home maintenance and assistance program, our home, uh, maintenance and repair assistance program. This is actually the third year that we've come before the council. The first year was, uh, in twenty-fourteen, November of twenty-fourteen, when we received a ten-thousand-dollar grant from, uh, the, uh, Elks National Foundation. And, uh, when we got that grant, uh, which is a very competitive grant, uh, we were, uh, out of two thousand lodges, uh, nationally, we were one of twenty that received the grant in twenty-fourteen, as you may recall. And, uh, we started, uh, actually doing work in twenty-fifteen. Basically, the, uh, uh, home maintenance and repair assistance program, uh, we call Home Wrap, uh, and its mission is to assist low-income and elderly families here in, uh, South Kingstown. We also service, uh, Naragansett and, uh, uh, sometimes, uh, North Kingstown, but it's primarily the South Kingstown, uh, and Naragansett area. And, uh, primary resources to perform, uh, routine maintenance, repair assistance, at no cost to enable residents to remain in their homes. Ninety-five percent of our customers are single, uh, women, elderly, uh, women, low-income women. And, uh, so, uh, uh, we're, we're pretty proud of that in terms of what we're able to, uh, the services that we're able to provide. And basically, the funding comes from the Elks National Foundation, whose mission is to, uh, help Elks build stronger, uh, communities. In two thousand nine, they established the Community Investment Program. Uh, that program, uh, has embodied in it four separate grants, uh, given out to the lodges. Three of those four are all competitive grants. Uh, they are the gratitude grant, which is a two-thousand-dollar grant, the beacon grant, and that gratitude grant, by the way, we've received for the last five years, that goes to support, uh, underprivileged, uh, kids to day camp at Alton Jones. Uh, the beacon grant, which is a beacon in our community, uh, is, again, uh, we've received for five years running, that goes for our senior dinner dance, which we hold at the lodge, and we've done that for five years, and I would like to invite all of you, and, uh, most of you have attended in prior years, uh, will be holding it again this year on April twenty-seventh at the Elks Lodge. Uh, then we have the promise grant, is the third grant, uh, that, uh, we've received one time last year, twenty-five-hundred dollars. We sent a group of kids to a posh ox game, uh, with, uh, guardians. They had lunch up there, watched a game, and it was a great event. The final grant, and what we're going to kind of share with you tonight in terms of our progress report, is called an impact grant, and, and the name of that impact is, come up with a program that has an impact upon your community. And after we went through, uh, a year and a half, two years of research, we came up with our, uh, home maintenance and repair assistance program. Over the last three years, since twenty-thirteen, we've taken in from these four grants, fifty-three-thousand, five-hundred dollars, that's going back into the community, both for our dinner dance, for our campusship program, and primarily for, uh, our home maintenance and, uh, assistance program. Twenty-fifteen, when we came before you last year, uh, our first year was, uh, of, where we completed painting, yard maintenance, minor, household repairs, and so forth, we received fifteen requests to do work in twenty-fifteen. Of that fifteen, we actually completed twelve projects. And we came before you, uh, last March in twenty-sixteen, we reported on these twelve projects that are completed, and we felt pretty good about it. This year, we were hoping to build upon that during twenty-sixteen, and we did. We received, uh, that's my pester, by the way, I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge him. He's, this is first time on, on our PowerPoint, so you gotta be patient with us. So, uh, we received thirty-nine requests, we completed twenty-six projects, uh, eight were beyond scope. We actually had one that, uh, was a full roof repair, but we were able to work with the applicant, and she actually, uh, submitted an application for a federal program which got approved. And we carried four of those projects forward into twenty-seventeen. We thought that tonight, rather than going through a bunch of numbers and that sort of thing, that you would really be interested in seeing some of the work that we've done, and some of the projects that we've been involved in, because that's where you really get a sense of what's going on in our community and the types of things that, uh, we're involved in. And we're actually going to begin with one of the projects that we, uh, shared with you last year, but we thought it was important because it was the first project that we, uh, took up in, in the program. And what's so interesting about this project, and there are several things that come to mind, but one is that when we started this program, we said that what we were going to do is really primarily yard work, small, very small repair, uh, work, because we really wanted in the first year to get our feet wet, and we wanted to kind of gradually move into larger repair projects. Our first project was a wheelchair ramp, and it was a, a significant project far beyond what we first expected, but it was a tremendous, positive project for all of us that worked on it, and it taught us a lot as we went forward, not only last year, but the year before. The applicant in this particular project, uh, related to a family member, uh, had a disability, hadn't been out of our house, out of, uh, her house, so we were told in six months, the time prior to that, she, uh, any time that she had to leave, she had to, uh, have an ambulance, uh, come and actually transport her to, uh, seeing, uh, physicians, nurses, or wherever she had to go. So, that was the basis upon which we decided that we were going to, uh, do this project first because of its, uh, immediate need. Uh, what we learned from it was that, uh, given the size of the project, it was, uh, financially, a significant project. It ended up taking a third of our grant. So, we had to then go, uh, when, looking forward, and projects that came before us, uh, in future months, kind of decide how we were going to utilize our resources that were available to us. Uh, secondly, not only in terms of, uh, financial resources, it took a, a tremendous number of volunteers. We used maybe twelve to fifteen volunteers on this project. In addition to our own financial resources, we have the capability of using those resources for outside contractors, for those, uh, things that we can't do on our own, and in this particular project, you'll see a person, looks like he's hanging from the tree, but he's really cutting down limbs because there was an overhang over, uh, the, um, ramp that was a safety issue, so we, uh, realized that we had to take care of that. Uh, so, this is looking down the ramp, and, uh, I have to say that, uh, most of those that worked on this project, uh, it was so heartwarming to be there when the applicant came out. And she came out, it was early summer, late spring, uh, and she said, my gosh, I'm actually going to be able to sit out here, I'm going to be able to listen to the birds, feel the sun, and, uh, and the breeze. So that in itself, uh, made this just such a worthwhile project. And moving on from this project, and we had several pictures involved in this, uh, and, uh, when completing this project, we moved on to another that had a number of different, uh, parts of this application, was to paint the porch here, uh, and the steps, it was to, uh, replace, uh, some shutters, uh, and so what we decided, uh, when we reviewed this project, that, uh, when we saw the shutters that she asked for us to repli, re, repair, they were in such disre, uh, uh, disrepair, that we felt that we couldn't just repair one or two, because it would look so strange, we decided that the best thing would be to replace all of her shutters with new shutters. So that's what we did. In terms of, uh, doing that work, when we, uh, started, we realized that there were also some landscaping, uh, need, which she did not ask for, uh, but there was a major safety issue on her frets, front steps going in. She used the back porch, uh, that we had painted as her main entryway, and we decided that was also a safety issue, so that we, uh, cleaned all of the steps. One of the things that we noticed and we learned as we started doing all of these projects is that when we had agreed with an applicant to do what was requested, once we got to the project, we realized frequently that there was a lot more involved and other things that needed to be done. You're going to see this as we kind of move through some of these projects. The next one, uh, will actually be another illustration of that. This was one where you can see, we were asked to do major clearing, uh, in the front of the house. You'll notice the corner on the left side of the house, uh, that was blocking windows, it was blocking, uh, railings coming out of the house, so the individual barely had, uh, access to the house. And moving on down, you'll also notice that, uh, that's moving further to the right, uh, front of the house that she, uh, had asked that we clear, and that's the garage, uh, that she hadn't been able to utilize in years because she couldn't get into it. One thing I want to note on this project is that we were fortunate enough, and we're going to continue working on this in the future, of developing some, uh, just absolutely fantastic support from some of our, uh, community businesses. This particular project, uh, we didn't have all of the equipment that we needed in order to accomplish what needed to be done, and we were able to, uh, get, uh, from Liberty Rental, the equipment that we needed in order to accomplish this project. In addition to that, uh, we have great support from Naragansett rubbish, and we had, uh, uh, a real difficult decision to make of what were we going to do with everything that we were cutting down, and, uh, so, uh, they, uh, were, uh, great assistants, and a third, and we used these businesses and other, uh, uh, jobs as well, but this one, all three of them participated in helping us out, uh, uh, Rocky Tree Service actually shredded all of the debris that we, uh, cut down, and this is an example of that. This is the way the house looked after we were done, the front of the house, and, uh, moving further, uh, towards, that's the end, and you'll notice that's where the big trees were that we cut down there. The issue there was the electrical wires, where the trees were growing up, the electrical wires, and that window that's exposed now wasn't exposed at all. So she wasn't getting any light from that window, the front window, and barely could get in the front door. Uh, when we, uh, got to the garage, cleared that, we opened the garage, and, uh, that's what we found in the garage, and, uh, had no idea. We expected when we were going to open the garage, we were going to move her car in, and clearly, that was, uh, a new issue for us, and we, uh, collectively decided that, uh, we could be helpful by trying to clear out her garage under her supervision, and, uh, that's what we did, and, uh, as a result of that, uh, that's, uh, what it ended up looking, uh, like. And, when we cleared it out, we got to the back entrance into the garage, and- We expected when we were gonna open the garage, we were gonna move her car in. And clearly, that was a new issue for us, and we collectively decided that we could be helpful by trying to clear out her garage under her supervision. And that's what we did. And as a result of that, that's what it ended up looking like. And when we cleared it out, we got to the back entrance into the garage, and what we found there was, oh, that's reflective of, that's a thirty-yard dumpster. That's the largest dumpster that Narragansett Rubbish has. That dumpster was just from what was in the garage. When we got to that back door, that's the way the back door looked on the left, it was again a safety issue. Varmints were getting into the garage through the bottom sill there. So, we decided that we were going to replace her door as well as the sill, and you'll see that on the right. So, there again, a project that was going to be some major yard work turns into construction and so forth. And then, that's the front of the house, and you'll notice on the left side, the railing got broken down. On the right side, you'll notice there's a railing there. We decided we're gonna put in new railings. And so, we ended up putting in the railings, and that completed that project. On this one, very quickly, this was a floor replacement that went from the hallway into the kitchen. And what complicated this was when we started picking up the floor, the linoleum floor, there was another linoleum floor underneath it. And so, again, it made it a little complicated, made the project a little bit longer than what it needed to be. This is just some of our volunteers that are preparing the floor for installation, and that's the owner of that home with the floor replacement. And moving on to the next project, this one's great. It's right downtown Wakefield, ninety-seven-year-old lady, single lady that would go out during afternoons and pick up small branches and put them over in the corner. And said, when we went and did our site review, she said, "You know, anything that you could do would lift my spirits." And I don't care what it is. And, you know, I think she enjoyed coming out and bringing out lemonade and treats more than having us clear the bushes. But we did gutter, we cleaned her gutters. The fellow that's doing the flowerbed there is a volunteer over at the center. And he asked if he could volunteer on this program, and he volunteers doing the flowerbeds over at the center. And I might say that the center has been a tremendous support for us. We get a lot of applications through the center. And that's with the homeowner in the center there. Moving on to the next project, and that's just replacing some vents in Wakefield, some attic vents, installing some shade blinds. That was a security issue. This was a handrail, as you'll see, a safety bar. And on this particular one, the applicant had tried for weeks to get someone in to assist them. This happened to be a couple, and they learned about our program and applied, and within two weeks, we had the bars installed for them. And we tested them out. And this particular project was on Plains Road. Couple had a roof that needed to be replaced. It was leaking into the home. They couldn't get the roof replaced because the tree was overhanging. Gutters had to be cleaned. So, we contracted out and had the tree trimmed out, had the gutters cleaned out, and then they were able to proceed to have the roof replaced. On the next project, what might seem really simple, you see the little ledge below the door. This was an individual that was wheelchair-bound, couldn't get out of the house because of a four-to-five-inch ledge. So, within a matter of a couple of hours, we were able to put together the wheelchair ramp. And he looked like Rocky the squirrel when he flew out of the door. He was able to go in and out. And so, within a matter of a couple of hours, we were able to take care of his problem. God bless you. So, this is just a replacement of a bulkhead. She had varmints going into the basement, and we just, that's just a corner, they were getting into that corner as well as through the cracks, and we replaced it with the bulkhead. A lot of this equipment and purchases is all done local. For example, this year, we bought an equipment trailer. We bought it at Pat's in Charlestown. We do a lot of business with Arnold's. We've done major equipment purchases. That primarily was up in Home Depot, but we try and direct any sort of purchases of materials and that sort of thing locally. Looking ahead, we have basically three challenges to our program. And the first and most immediate is volunteers for the program. And secondly, we're looking for succession planning. And thirdly, and it's not why we're here this evening, ultimately, we're going to need some financial assistance. And just quickly, going back to our volunteers, the number of requests that we receive continue to increase, and obviously, so do the need for our volunteers. We had twenty-one volunteers this year that did those thirty-nine of twenty-six projects. Twenty-one. They put in seven-hundred-and-twenty-six hours. We can't probably do many more than twenty-six, thirty projects with twenty-one volunteers. And so, we're constantly, and it's our highest priority, to try and get more volunteers to join the Home Wrap team. Don't have to be an elk. We'll take volunteers from wherever they come from. The great thing about the program, for the most part, you don't need specific skills if you have carpentry. That's terrific. Painting, you know, we all can do some painting. Yard work, most of us can do yard work. It's the repair work that can create a little issue, but we've got some terrific carpenters that help us out, so we're fortunate that way. Most of our projects last only four to five hours. The ones that we've shown you have lasted a lot longer, but we had a lot of projects that we haven't shown you that moved quite quickly. So, it's like a morning, on a Saturday morning or Sunday morning. Most of us that are doing these projects are actually retired, and so, we're doing it during the week. We want the project, the program, to have longevity in our community. So, because of that, succession planning is our second most important thing. So, we're hoping that we can get people involved in the program that will take upon themselves the leadership role and move the program forward into the future. And then, lastly, although I mentioned finances are not currently an issue, they certainly will be in the future, we're looking into getting state support, nonprofit support, hopefully, commercial support. We plan on running events at the lodge that will further support our efforts in this program. This is the third year that we've received a maximum ten-thousand-dollar grant for this program, keeping in mind that the Elks National Foundation, when they created this program, it was supposed to be a five-year program where it would step down twenty percent a year for five years, so that in the sixth year, it would be self-supporting. Because of the support from them and their support for our program, we've gotten the maximum amount for three years going. So, we're gonna keep going for ten thousand dollars until they say, "You gotta step it down." So, that's basically the program. We're really pleased that we were able to come before you and show some progress. Hopefully, we'll be able to come again next year and show further progress. And if anyone is any interest in either volunteering, know of any applicants that could use our service. I have applications over on the table. This is an extension number that ties right into my email address, and I'll try and get back to you within twenty-four hours. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions at the council.
Other than getting the word out, is there something else that the town could do to help?
The town, right now, the town has been absolutely terrific from day one. The town supported us through the application process. They've given us the opportunity through the council of coming in here and kind of sharing our story and allowing us to put on the screen. So, as long as we know, and by the way, I use that with the national, because it's important for the national to know that we're reaching out to the community and that we have the community's support. So, as an example, for this presentation, this will be a package presentation that I'll show to the national together with the PowerPoint, with the materials that you probably haven't had an opportunity to look at, but I'll send them the same materials that I've sent to you. So, for now, I couldn't ask, we couldn't ask for more. If you have, if you know of any volunteers, send them our way, and if you know of anyone that we can serve, send them our way. You know, once again, that's the number to call, and we'll get back to them. Everyone has to file an application. We do a site review, and we let them know immediately whether or not we're able to do it. Our working schedule is basically between May and November, when winter sets in and makes it more difficult for us, although we can do some projects. We just did a wheelchair ramp, a sixteen-foot wheelchair ramp. That was an interior one last week. We knocked it off in a day. So, you know, we can do stuff in the winter, but it's a lot easier in the summer.
Ken, the majority of us sitting here at the table, we're all Elks. And I serve on the board of the Elks. I've seen your presentation, but I've also seen you talk about this so passionately at the general meetings. You need a lot more credit.[1292.25][1292.25](laughter)
It's a team. It really is a team.
But you do such a fantastic job. You really work very hard for this program. I'm very proud of you.
Thank you. We have, it's a wonderful team that we have, very dedicated, committed. We have large support. We have council support. We have business community support. So, we've got a lot going for us. And we have the Elks National Foundation support. I mean, for them to give us three years running, ten thousand dollars, shows how much they appreciate the program that we're putting forward, so.
Such a great program.
You know, so.
It really is.
Thanks, Ken. Just one idea. We had a couple groups come in during our outside agencies budget process preparation, and neighbors helping neighbors mentioned that they worked with you. So, maybe there's a chance for sharing volunteers that way, but also the Southern Rhode Island Volunteer Organization, I don't know if you're in touch with them, but maybe they have some volunteers.
Neighbors helping neighbors was very instrumental from the very beginning in helping us through the application process, once we decided this was what we were going to shoot for. And so, we interact with them two, three times a year. They help us to a great extent because they've already met or faced a number of issues that prevent us from having to face, you know? So, that has helped us tremendously. We've talked about cooperating in terms of, their program basically is, they've got a ton of volunteers, but they go out maybe twice a year. And they, it's very concentrated, where they'll do a weekend, two days, and they knock off, you know, like a dozen projects. Whereas, we're more kind of going through the entire summer. We're also reaching out, we've looked into the school system. That's like an ongoing process. That's not quite as easy as what I was hoping for in that. And we're also reaching out to URI as well.
It's a great program, Ken.
Thank you.
Anybody have any comments?
Jim O'Neill. I too commend the Elks for a great job. My question will be to Steve on this. For all the years I was on the council, fourteen years, we gave an awful lot of money to the South County Community Action Group. Did I say that correctly? Yet, I never got to see any of the work that they did. So, I don't know if there's an overlap, are the Elks doing some of the work that we would expect from Community Action?
We've talked about the need, projects too large for this group to look to CDBG applications. The CAP Agency was running that program for us up through last year. At that point, we began contracting through the Town of East Greenwich for their housing assistance. What we're providing is direct grants, up to twenty thousand dollars, code enforcements on owner-occupied homes. And we're probably doing ten to fifteen of those a year through that program. Right now, there's some change program where instead of a local allocation being provided to each of the towns, we put the applications together on a project basis to the state to get funding. But this is one where if there was a job too large for the L2 handle, and it was code associated, we would look at trying to use them as a conduit to get people into the program.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other further comments?
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight A. Communication dated February twenty-second from Dorian Boardman submitting her resignation from the Conservation Commission effective March first is received and placed on file. And for the direction.
I'd make a motion to put this on file and to send a letter of thanks to Dorian Boardman for her service.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item eight B, we did discuss this in the work session. Resolutions adopted February seventh, two thousand seventeen by the School Committee concerning Group Home Aid, Concealed Firearms on School Grounds, Teacher Tenure Act, Early College Dual and Concurrent Enrollment Regulations, Curriculum and Instruction in Health and Physical Education, House Bill H fifty-one twenty, Student Transportation and Student Assessment Information and Stakeholder Report.
Since we haven't had a chance to thoroughly review a lot of these resolutions, I'd make a motion to continue this to the next meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
D, a communication dated March eighth from Dennis Bowman on behalf of Friends of Greenhill Pond requesting twenty-five thousand dollars in matching funds to conduct Phase One of a study aimed at improving the water circulation in Greenhill Pond. Received and I'm proud of you. Want to continue.
I think, make a motion to place this on file and direct it to public, oh, yeah, somebody to speak on. Yep. Yes. Before we get to discussion, I do wanna just say that we discussed the possibility of placing this in the budget during our work session. What we've decided to do, since we already voted on the preliminary budget, was to wait until later in the year, potentially use funds that are already in our TMDL fund, which is a capital reserve account that we have. So, the fact that the twenty-five thousand wasn't in the budget that we approved earlier does not mean that we're not considering the funding.
Thank you. And I'll make my comments really brief. You have the information. We've been meeting with multiple state officials, especially Senator Algier, trying to get state funding. And the reason is that we've got, Greenhill Pond is dying. This is not a matter for debate. Salt Ponds Coalition, DEM, CRMC, all validates that. It's only a matter of the pace that it's dying. So, what we're trying to do is get ahead of the process here and find a way to bring the pond back to life. Why should you all care? Property values. If we have a dead pond that stinks and turns into a mud flat, property values will go down, tax revenue will go down in one of the higher taxed areas of the town. Wildlife restoration, got multiple bird, wildlife, and other animals that visit and stay and do their thing on the pond. It adds a certain dimension to quality of It adds a certain dimension to quality of life that I think is unmatched. Anywhere in the state, we have a precious salt pond, and we should value it. You've got recreational opportunities, and many of you boat, many of you kayak. We don't want to leave a four-hundred-and-thirty-acre pond to die. So, this, I could go on, but this project is aimed, and we've been working with CRMC, URI, DEM, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife. It's aimed at improving water circulation so that we can get ahead of the curve in terms of the pollution that's there, and ultimately form the basis for bringing this pond back to life. It's a multi-phase project. It's not easy. It's not cheap. And what we're asking for is the town to provide matching funds that the state is going to come up with, in part, to conduct a first-phase study to determine the exact impact of two options that we've discussed with all the relevant parties. Constructing a temporary breachway and dredging underneath the Creek Bridge between Renegre and Greenhill. That's, that's what we're asking for. I think it's, we talk about investment for the future. This is one of those projects. Are there any other questions that anybody wants to ask?
What do you mean by a temporary breachway? I'm sorry.
Temporary breachway was first proposed ten years ago in the Woodard and Gurn Report that was sponsored in part by the Town of South Kingstown. In that report, it looked at, one of the options for flushing the pond was to construct a permanent breachway between Greenhill Pond and Long Island Sound, or Lock Island Sound, I should say. However, in the report, they explicitly said, "We would only consider that if it were done at first in a temporary way," by digging a twenty-foot-wide, four-foot-deep trench, if you will, across the barrier beach between the Sound and Greenhill Pond. So, the periodic, and it would fill up. Everybody knows it's going to fill up. Could be a week, could be a couple of weeks, it'll fill up. And the idea is that either you continue doing that once, twice, three times a year to periodically flush Greenhill Pond, or you move on and try to construct a permanent breachway to permanently flush it. But that's way down the road. What we're proposing right now is one option would be construct, digging a trench basically several times a year and assessing what the impact would be on water quality. To do that, we first need to actually model it and see if it's going to matter and what the environmental impacts could be. The EM study that I found from nineteen seventy-one thought it was a terrible idea because of the ecological impact. But there was really no study work done then. There's been no study work done in the last forty years to actually assess the impact. That's part of what the study's about.
In talking with DEM, have they raised any concerns now about potential changes in salinity within the pond or any other impacts?
DEM specifically has not, but Town of Charlestown officials have. And there is a difference in salinity between Renegre and Greenhill of about four parts per million. So, it's about twenty versus twenty-four, and a C is about thirty-two. So, at least some portion of Greenhill Pond would have a slight increase in salinity levels. And there's been concerns raised about the impact on the oyster population. One of the explicit parts of the study we're proposing is to assess the impact on shellfish. We don't want to make things worse. Obviously, we want to make things better, and that's why we need to conduct a study, not only to get the permits, but to make sure we're making things better and not worse. Okay? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
So, I would make a motion to place this on file and direct it to the Public Services Department for later on this spring.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight E. A resolution adopted March sixth of this year by the Narragansett Town Council opposing legalization of marijuana and the creation of a commercial marijuana industry is received. And if the council further directs?
Motion to place this on file.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item F. A communication dated March eighth of this year from members of the Healthy Places by Design Group requesting consideration of two recommendations regarding pedestrian and bicycle safety is received and placed on file, and the council further directs?
I think there are people, somebody to speak on this.
Hi, Kenny Burke. I just wanted to reference that the request, I actually had two individual requests for motions, and one of them has made it to the agenda, and respectfully, we're fine with that. So, just take my seat, and again, thank you for the workshop back in February twenty-second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Motion to place on file.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is a communication dated March eighth from Council Vice President Abel Collins proposing South Kingstown Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee Charge is received and placed on file, and we further direct?
Yeah. So, this came out of the last agenda item, the communication from Healthy Places by Design. I thought it would be easy to work off the sort of template we used when we created the Sustainability Committee, to have a committee that focuses on bicycle and pedestrian issues, which is one of the things that was asked for in that communication. I've heard that some people might want to change a few aspects of it. I think I chose five members, basically because that's what we used in the previous committee. I would defend that number, given the fact that it took seven months or so to get those five committee members together. Expanding that number greatly might expand the amount of time we have to put in before we can get this committee seated, if we choose to create it. And I think, you know, with five members, you have hopefully an ability to get a diverse selection of people, somebody to represent people with interests who are, you know, mobility impaired, cyclists, pedestrians, maybe a transportation engineer somewhere out there in the community. And the, and the general idea, of course, of this committee is just to help the town plan to incorporate more pedestrian and cyclist-friendly policies and infrastructure in the future.
So, Abel, it would be advisory-only on the screen?
Yes.
And I did have the opportunity to speak to some folks, and I wonder if that five was set in stone, because there might be a few more people that might want to be on it, but.
I think five's a good number, and I think if there are other people, like, can't they come to their meetings?
I would assume.
Yeah, the meetings would definitely be open to the public as any official body. So, the more the merrier.
So, how would you revise that we move?
I mean, I'd.
Want to move to adopt a charge?
Yeah, I would, I would make that motion. There's.
Do you have a second? Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I would just request if you would consider perhaps a minimum number, like a minimum of five, and if the, if we did have an influx of folks that were willing to serve, I think that'd be a great opportunity for some continued collaboration. We've seen through Healthy Places by Design with town staff, numbers upwards of a couple of dozen people regularly attending meetings, actually for several years. So, maybe a minimum threshold of five, no fewer than five committee members. And again, it's, it's an advisory committee anyways, so.
It's an ad hoc committee created by the council. You can absolutely, it's within your discretion, if you want to change its number at some future point, you can.
Could we do something like a minimum of five and a maximum of nine? I mean.
Or we could start with five and change it in the future, or?
We can just do it. I would make a friendly amendment to that motion to say a minimum of five and a maximum of nine members of the advisory committee. So.
That works.
My name's Caterie Collins, and I'm just here to thank you for consideration. We've been waiting, not waiting, but we've been eager to have a conversation with the town for a lot of years, and this is a great opportunity to communicate and be able to assist the town. Our perspective is not in any way adversarial. It's, you know, collaborative, and I think that came across really well in the work session. I do think that there are a lot of people, and I think to diversify the input, five as the minimum would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion on the table.
Abel, are we, are we talking about monthly meetings for this committee or quarterly meetings, or what do you?
I think the committee members themselves will, will set their agenda, probably. Is it, it's not required monthly in what I wrote up, I don't think. I think.
And Steve, would you staff it the same way you do other committees?
Yeah, I think what I've mentioned before is that I'd like to have the opportunity to provide different types of staffing based on issues that we're dealing with. If something's involving something with public services, we want to want Josh or John involved. If it's involving something that's leisure services, I want to bring other people in. Principally, it would be managed through the planning function, but those other, those other resources are going to be available to assist.
So, I have a motion, but I don't have a second. Do we have a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine, comments from interested citizens. I'm going to ask in lieu of time here, because we still have so many items left on the agenda, and by town charter, we can't go past eleven o'clock. If you wanted to make some comments, I'm going to ask that you state your name at the podium, and I would ask you to limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Hello, Therese Martin from Peacedale Neighborhood Revitalization. I missed a meeting, so I'm here to apologize for that. I don't think I can put into words the chaos that ensues when a teenage girl blows the engine out of her first car and what that does to a family. We're all volunteers. I had every intention of being here last week to discuss PDNRI's request for inclusion in the budget. Tonight, I thought I would be coming here to beg you to still consider us. From what I understand, you did review the application and approved our funding request, so I would like to thank you for that and apologize again. We don't take your, you know, your money for granted. We really appreciate the town's regular contribution. I didn't know if anyone had any questions or?
I guess the only question I had, because someone made a comment up here earlier about meetings, you know, when are they scheduled? Is it monthly or quarterly?
We had traditionally been holding them monthly. They've been less regular. We, you know, after a few meetings, you don't get a quorum, you tend to, you bump to quarterly, I guess. We do have a meeting next week, where we're going to be talking about that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to come to the podium to speak?
Jim O'Neill, I spoke in front of you last week with your joint committee with the school department and the school committee, and obviously, you all read Sunday's paper, and there was Warwick, Rhode Island, which I brought up to you. And obviously, you've got copies in front of you. Nineteen schools have closed. They did what they had to do, beginning back in two thousand and seven. Population was dropping. Demographics were changing. Eight hundred to nine hundred homes that were taken for the airport expansion, but things changed. They did what they had to do. Of those, ten were closed. The other nine became parks, open space. They eliminated their special ed schools only. They consolidated where they had to. But they made decisions, management decisions. And their demographics are not like our, unlike ours. Population was getting older, and those over fifty-five had increased substantially. All this, you can read the newspaper, go online. I tell you the truth of everything that I read. And what was quite amazing here, I looked, I did call a couple school departments, and even Warwick admitted that they were about eighty percent of capacity with the new numbers, eighty percent. You know where South Kingstown is? Well, you don't, because you don't look up the numbers. The last study by NASDAQ had us approximately forty-seven, forty-eight hundred student capacity for all our schools. We're at three thousand. We're at sixty-five percent. That is malfeasance. That is mismanagement. And I've told you many times before, back in two thousand and nine, Superintendent Hicks said, "This is it. One more year. We've got to start making decisions." Tony Mager, president of the school committee, two thousand and twelve, over facilitated. And then he went on to say, "We'd have some more money to use with less transportation costs, less upkeep. We could put more money towards our students." And that's all on the record. This isn't speculation I've given to you ever up here. So, it just amazes me that with your, with your determination tonight, you didn't give that any consideration. I'm amazed. I also gave you figures last week, specifically to you, Madam President. We have never, from a parent-child relationship, had a lower ratio, a better ratio for student to the NEA-certified SK, down to nine-point-seven-five per child. It was over twelve back in two thousand and one, two, when we opened up Broad Rock. You have to keep in mind, we were forty-four hundred kids then, we're basically three thousand now. And just because you're short on time, and believe me, I know what it's like to stay here all night long. Editorial, three editorials, Boston Globe, two in the Providence Journal over the last three weeks. The number one, the number one issue that kills a community, that kills a state, that harms job creation, harms business development, is property taxes. And if you haven't figured that out, I don't know what I can do for you. Property taxes is the number-one killers for states to try to grow away from. And this is where the damage to Rhode Island continues to occur. So, please, start looking at the numbers. The great thing about numbers, they never lie. We can all philosophize and all think and say different things, fake news if you wish. Numbers always speak the truth. So, I think you really need to start paying attention to them, because it is absolutely not fair to the taxpayers, what you're doing, when the children are in the best situation they've ever been for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else have any comments? If none, we'll move on to our town manager's report.
I have nothing further to add from the reports I've submitted. I'll be glad to address them.
Any word on what's happening tomorrow with the huge blizzard that's coming in?
Well, the best information at this point is suggesting that there is going to be heavy snow. It will arrive probably after seven in the morning, and be heaviest between ten and two. We're expecting anywhere from, at this point, eight to twelve inches. It will change to rain sometime.
It will change to rain sometime in the afternoon. The concern is that as the rain comes in, the temperatures will drop and whatever is still on the ground is going to be frozen, which is going to make it near impossible to remove. So it's going to be a long day tomorrow. We have not quoted Mr. Wolf's statements. Certainly we've given anybody an opportunity to take personal or vacation leave if in fact we feel that's broken. And we'll play the day as it comes. Public services is ready and public safety is ready as well. We've had meetings today that were set to address the concerns. We just asked the people to stay off the roads. We asked them to give the clouds the distance and that if there are electrical outages, which are our biggest concern at this point, is we're anticipating over 50 mile an hour rusts. We're expecting that there will be power outages and people need to understand that wires are in down trees. We cannot open the roads until those wires are removed from the trees. And there's priority listing as to how that's done. Sometimes it doesn't look as if anybody's doing what they should be doing, but there's a method to the power company's method of operation. They have, at this point, over 100 obrus trucks that are on standby for the state and they've brought in in addition to their 45 normal trucks on the power grid, another 200. So they're prepared for the storm, but it could be a long duration with power outages depending on the type of road we lost to the area.
Thanks, Jim. Good luck tomorrow.
Good luck. That's right. Schools are closed, correct?
Yes, they're closed.
I would make it so that this is closed. We'll take out. Town solicitor's report.
Sounds like a day of cartoons tomorrow. I've all said, thank you.
Moving on to item number 12, appointments.
I would make a resolution to appoint Donna Gilton to the library board of trustees.
Let me have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to page 7E, a resolution authorizing an award bid to Jerry Flooring in Cranston for town hall carpeting in an amount not to exceed $52,775, including a contingency of $7,000, as further described in the memorandum.
As presented.
Any other discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, F, a resolution authorizing an award contract to Matchpoint Water Asset Management for leak detection services in an amount not to exceed $12,000, including a contingency and again, as described in the memorandum on month 7.
I would just point out one thing here. We're going out as a joint service contract with the town of Narragansett. Narragansett acted as the principal on this, so we use their bidding procedures and bid documents. We think that this is a price that should provide us with some good efficiencies. So I recommend the council approve as presented.
Do I hear a motion?
A motion to approve 13F. I'll make a second.
So moved. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Item G is a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute Rhode Island Department of Transportation Construction and Maintenance agreements for High Street improvements, further detailed in a memo from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager, March 8, 2017.
As the council's aware, the improvements and the reconstruction on High Street required substantial drainage improvements that impact the Sagatucket River. One of the requirements of the Department of Environmental Management was that remediation of other areas were necessary because the proper sand filtering for the surface water runoff was not available, land was not available within the Main Street project area. What they agreed to do is to allow for improvements to occur within the Sagatucket drainage area, but we had to find the land on municipal properties. We determined that to meet the DEM requirements, we would need sufficient acreage that would require three sites. One was the back parking lot at the high school, the second was the parking lot at Hazard School, and the third was the parking lot behind the Bell Block. Each of those would be sand filter swales that would be placed to be able to accept the surface water runoff from those parking areas to be able to filter it before it would get groundwater or eventually get into the river system itself. The school department was involved with our review of the different school locations and had to provide sign off on the two swales that would be placed on school property. And the third swale at the Bell Block is one that would require town council sign off since it's in this property. Tonight, we're asking for authorization for the manager to be able to sign the necessary documents to be able to fulfill the drainage requirements associated with the High Street project.
Thanks, Steve. So a swale, if you know what I'm saying, is really just sort of a, it's a green infrastructure project, which has sort of a little indentation, I would say, in sort of an otherwise grassy.
A person can traverse a swale. In fact, the one at Bell Block, the question was asked earlier on whether we were going to be prohibiting the access to the river itself. And the Public Services Director's answer was no, that the swale would be between where the curb line is now, that runs parallel with the river itself and in front of the walkway.
So no loss of parking in that circumstance?
Loss of parking. I mean, obviously, we still have some parking issues that occur there where people are parking along the curb line, which is not a recognized spot. We may see that same type of parking continue once that curb line's removed and the swale is installed.
Can I say something?
Allow it. I think you're the president of the light. Thank you.
I'm a property of butter. My name is Ken Tetsner. I own the property where Phil's is, right next to that parking lot. I'm also the president of the WVA. I think most of you know me. But I spoke with Dan Bell. We kind of stumbled across these plans, looking into cleaning up the intrusive species down at the river. And this came across the table. We didn't know anything about it. And I'm not sure if any of you guys in the council were able to see the plan, if you've seen it.
I looked at it myself. I'm not an engineer, so I didn't understand everything I was looking at.
Right.
But I'd say the concerns that I had were answered by what the town manager and Mr. Shock told us in the work session. So no loss of, I mean, really, as I understand.
Yeah, I don't think, I think you guys had a meeting up there, so we couldn't hear that. So I don't think I got those answers as well.
So I think basically what you're looking at is the granite curb will be removed. It's just going to be grass right up to the edge of the parking lot, not losing any of the parking lot. This way, the water is allowed to run down into that grass. There'll be a little tiny retention sort of thing that the water can gather in and get filtered before it goes to the.
Like a ditch?
Yeah, it's like a ditch, sort of.
So there's going to be a ditch to walk through before you get to the Sagatucket River, going all the way from Palm Assi down to the pedestrian bridge?
There will be, as I understand it, there will be access points, so.
I didn't, I didn't see the access points in the drawing. I saw a copy of the plan. So that was one concern. Another concern is, I guess, there's a lot of other issues in talking to Mr. Bell as well, who was wondering why we chose that area when we could choose possibly another area, maybe still staying in the Sagatucket River landscape, maybe down by the basketball courts, not to interfere with downtown parking, which I'm there every day and the kids, the parents that pick up the kids, even though they're not spots, those spots are always filled. And at the end of the day, all the parents have to park there because Wakefield School doesn't have a big enough parking lot. So that is lined up with all the parents that are walking across the bridge that we built for them to pick their kids up at school, which no longer will be accessible for them if we do this plan. On top of, we're also working with URI right now. I thought they were coming up with some plans that we thought we were going to go through with the Sagatucket River. And, I mean, I looked at the plan and I didn't see it being much of an improvement as far as a landscape architect point of view. It doesn't, doesn't really look good. And I think there's an opportunity there if we're going to do something that, maybe we can have like a landscape architect to meet with the engineers again and try to get something out of this project, rather than just a gravel ditch right before you walk. And the gravel, it's a ditch. It looks like a ditch to me and it's gravel. It doesn't seem like a great idea. That's not making the river accessible to people that are walking through the parking lot that want to get to the river. Now they have to walk through a gravel ditch. That doesn't, that doesn't make much sense to me either. So I'm wondering if maybe we could postpone this. You know, and then the timing of it as well. I don't know when it's going to get done, but I've seen these, these kind of things happen in the past and they take a long time. And I'm sure they're going to have to shut down a big portion of the parking lot to do this. And, you know, we have our busy season, we have the Oktoberfest, so, I mean, all that taken into consideration as well has, it just seems problematic when, maybe it could have moved to a different area where it wouldn't affect downtown parking at all or any of the businesses. And we did it down by the basketball hoops. I know they have a problem there as well. Talking to Mr. Bell, he's in Tennessee, so he couldn't, he couldn't come here tonight, but he didn't know anything about it, was wondering why we were doing it. And said that there is also drainage issues that the parking lot, in the middle of the parking lot, like puddles up and along the back of the buildings. And this doesn't fix any of that as well because the runoff still doesn't get there. Just seems to be a lot of issues that, you know, we should look at before we go through with this project. And okay, if we could maybe meet with the engineers, maybe get a better plan out of it, maybe get some landscape architect as well and, or move it, I'm okay with that, too.
I think the reason, of course, for the, for the putting this forward right now is that this is necessary in order to move ahead with the High Street project. It's really just a requirement of stormwater issues related with the drainage there.
And you just, tell me again how this ties into High Street, though?
Through the state.
Right. I think John probably would answer these questions better than I.
I can remember them all. So first of all, High Street, I believe, is the first project by RIDOT where there's full depth reclamation and that triggers new stormwater regulations by the state where they have to offset the area of the road with treating impervious surface elsewhere in the watershed for the Sagatucket. The Bell Block, the downtown parking lot, was chosen because of the impervious surface that could be treated. The basketball court that Mr. Tetsner referred to is very little impervious surface. So the area that's being treated is just not the parking lot, but it's the roof leaders coming from the Bell Block buildings themselves. So think of all the roof area plus the parking lot. That was the primary reason why that was chosen, just as with the high school, is a significant amount of impervious area. I think, if my memory serves me correctly, they had to come up with almost an equivalent of three acres in the watershed of surface area that had to be treated. So that was the rationale for those areas that were selected. Again, there's a granite curb line right now, the sheet flow that comes across that parking lot hits the curb line and heads north to, there's a catch basin just south of the pedestrian bridge ramp that then discharges into the Sagatucket. The swale, the primary purpose is infiltration, but however, during those heavy storm event that exceeds the capacity, it then will top over to the catch basin before it is discharged to the Sagatucket. So the primary purpose is infiltration. If there are other things, you know, we can talk to RIDOT. There's other treatments we can do on that, the swale. But that's the primary rationale. And the other thing I want to remind the council is, probably about 10 years ago, we looked at a master plan for the parking lot with a rain garden and infiltration. And that was, we met with the proprietors and that was summarily dismissed. So we have tried to make other attempts down there to do stormwater treatment and they were not well received. So this, this again, is much minor as compared to what we tried to look at in the past. And that was loss of parking. This, there's no loss of parking.
Now, I've heard this characterized as a gravel ditch. Do you think that that's inappropriate?
I should have brought the plans with me. I mean, they were reviewed by the town engineer and RIDOT. I'm going to say it's either gravel or that's vegetated as well because you want uptake of pollutants that get into the swale before it makes it to the river. Again, the primary purpose is stormwater treatment. And there are areas to get to the stone seal path that runs along the Sagatucket.
John, to Ken's comments, is there a different design that perhaps would look better and guarantee access along the?
I mean, that's certainly something we can talk to RIDOT about and I'll be glad to do so. But again, you know, the purposes, again, you know, right now, the sheet flow comes down, hits the hard vertical face curb, heads north to the catch basin. Now it's going to sheet flow off the parking lot into the infiltration swale where it'll be treated.
What we act on tonight, is that design that you've proposed locked in? Is it something that we can?
I think it's something we can always discuss with RIDOT. I mean, they know, and this is, again, this is the first project that they've told us statewide that they've had to do this and it's, you know, it's a regulatory requirement by DEM. So I think they're trying to make this as like a pilot for other projects they're going to have to deal with in the state. So I'll be glad to discuss that with them.
The other point that I wanted to ask about was to Ken's point that is there another place along the Sagatucket that would fit this that wasn't so critical to Main Street and access to the river?
I think the problem with that is, is impervious surface. So you have to get, you have to find a parcel where you're capturing as much impervious surface as possible and still have the area to build the stormwater BMP. And those are very few and far between. When DEM did the TMDL study for the Sagatucket, I think one of them is at the Church Street Stone Arch Bridge and there's really, there's no real estate there. You know, they have an outfall there. So it's, again, it's trying to capture as much impervious surface and still have area at the low point where the stormwater flow goes to be able to treat it.
So we couldn't, we couldn't do it on the Wakefield School side, maybe?
You could, but again, there's not that much impervious surface there.
Again, I saw the plans. I looked at the plans. I don't pretend to understand them, so.
Well, so really quick, just one other thing. I mean, the, the timing of this project is very important to the downtown merchants and the businesses, especially for the events that we do and all that. And secondly, if you didn't get a chance to look at the plans, I don't, I don't claim to totally understand them either, but it does look like a gravel ditch. It goes the whole way. I didn't see anywhere where there's breaks in that, where you can walk to the river. So I, I really strongly feel like we need to look at the plan again before we, we just approve it. Because I think there's actually, you know, we could get something out of this, maybe. And we were talking about cleaning up the river and making it a nicer area. And I don't see how this does that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jen Judge and I just wanted to request that we do revisit and remove that third parking lot design out of the construction bid process. I have reviewed the plans and basically what the engineer has requested is a two-foot gravel strip. It's going to be loose stone. Keep in mind that we are shortening the distance of the cars backing out from what they are now with removal of that granite curb. So when that granite curb disappears and that distance becomes shorter, people will now be backing up onto the. now be backing up onto this loose gravel. It will be acrid, but tires will be now prone to potentially rolling back onto this. And that is the gravel strip. It is approximately two feet wide, and it will run the entire length, basically, of that parking lot. So in terms of walkability, if you want to walk across a two-foot gravel strip, okay. But aside from that, this grass swale is supposed to have a two-to-one or a three-to-one slope. And what that is interpreted as a two-to-one is very slope. A two-to-one slope is not a mowable slope. A three-to-one slope is borderline. So this is going to be very hard to maintain, and aesthetically, it's not going to look all that pleasing because it's going to be hard to maintain. I think the opportunity to revisit the rain garden would be fantastic, not only aesthetically, but I think as we start exploring green infrastructure, I think the other two sites will work fantastic at the school, as John had mentioned. But this is a very highly-used public space, so if we could actually reintroduce, revisit that, bring it back to the drawing board, and introduce perhaps a rain garden, and even if not here, if we can introduce that somewhere else to treat the stormwater from High Street or Kingstown Road, I think this would be a great learning tool for not only the public, but also potentially for other merchants and those who are looking to revisit their own infrastructure that, you know, we have a lot of asphalt in Wakefield that could use that. So I just would like to advocate and request that we do revisit this design for this particular area. Thank you.
Now, so my understanding is essentially if we approve this, there is still the opportunity for the town to look at this particular design and add or remove certain aspects to it?
I have no difficulty with going back to DOT and determining what changes could be made with it. I think we could make that review within the next couple of weeks, and you could continue this item to the next council agenda, and I'll be able to have John provide a more specific report on what can and can't be done. I mean, the main concern here was, A, the law, not to lose parking, which where the rain garden originally was planned would have occurred, and two, more importantly, is to be able to meet the requirements that we have to be able to do the Main Street project. Council's been aware of the fact that we had to reclaim those acres, you know, since we got the approval to get that project moving. I have no difficulty with attempting to make something which is more acceptable to people, whether it's a grass-lined swale or what it may be. But it's not going to be a change in the location. It's got to be at that location because we could not find any other place that we owned as municipal land where we could put that swale in place, based on the amount of acreage that we had to cover. So I have no difficulty, if you want to continue it, and give John and I an opportunity to take a look at what, if anything, can be done there and bring that back to the council.
I mean, I think this is the right location as well. I don't have a problem with the location. I just want, what would help the argument with DOT? What would help get more concessions out of them? Would it be us not approving this tonight and you being able to go to DOT and say, "Well, the council's not approving this until you guys do this and this and this"? Or does it help for us to approve it now and be done with it?
I don't see the two-week delay as a problem. So let's take it to the next council meeting, and at that point, we can address it again. The main thing I need to reiterate is the fact that that project is going to go through. If we can change it as far as the way it looks and make it more acceptable from that perspective, that's fine. But this is a public parking lot that we need to address because, to a great extent, we're improving water quality with this installation at no cost to the town on town property.
Understood. A motion to continue...
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Again, Kenny Burke, I applaud the town manager's actions to suggest that you give this a little bit more time to look at advancing the landscape design that is absent in this particular plan. I innocently was working with some colleagues at DEM planning on Earth Day events, found out that this cleanup that we were proposing was in the same location of the drainage designs. We found some plans where you start taking a look at it. It would be helpful also to kind of enumerate the impacts of this new project. It is a new project. It's got a new number. It's got a new DEM permit. DOT has a longstanding practice of ensuring the public has access and engages in discussions on new projects. I understand that this happened with the school committee, with the school sites. I don't think it necessarily happened with this Main Street parking lot, but from what I understand, everybody completely supports doing some stormwater remediation here. It does make sense. But when you look at the impacts, and it's a five-foot swath that gets taken out of the back edge of the parking lot, the curbing comes out. If you can imagine pulling out of those angled spaces, you're going to have now five feet less. The first thing that you will hit is a crushstone ditch. And if you can navigate that and pull out of it without tearing your, you know, spinning out rocks, you may actually go through what is not a gentle ditch. It is a steep slope going into this sand filter. Again, great for water quality, that makes perfect sense, but when you get somebody with talent, a landscape architect, to take a look at that, you start to see how actual functional stormwater system becomes an amenity. And DOT is obligated through the town to make sure that they come forth with a good plan. There is a handicap ramp that is kind of midway in the parking lot in the back. I don't think it meets any standards these days, but it is going to go away, so there will be an impact, and you could get challenged. The town could get challenged with a violation of ADA laws when that handicap ramp goes away. So I appreciate the town manager's willingness to take another look at this design. Thank you.
Motion to continue to the next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
Should we make a motion on that license again? Six A, was it?
Oh, yeah.
Motion to continue item six A to the next meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
I can't.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have media adjourned at ten twenty-nine.
Can I ask you a quick question? So here, it's a position of being a member of...
Some council member, yes.
Union, yeah, it's only related to Union Fire. Kingston, I'm not a part of, so... I have the following interests. It's just that I'm... I have a vote...
Are you a voter?
Wardens, no, no, different. No, so Snug Harbor, it's its own nonprofit. Will Bennett from this, Snug Harbor Volunteer Fire. I have, I can vote on Snug Harbor. Like, our quorum, like, all the members have a vote.
All right.
A member of Snug Harbor.
Set Snug Harbor by the bond chair.